The commission meeting on February 21st is called the order roll call please.
Here.
Thank you.
Here. Commissioner Freeman.
Credit.
Commissioner Warren.
Roger.
Commissioner Mike.
Yeah.
Thanks, glad you all could make it. Next up on the agenda is public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items of which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. If you're here for general public comment, I would welcome you to the podium. You can begin with your name and address and at some point you can sign your name in the little in the black.
Thank you. Um, hi, I'm Kelsey Lance. I in we do our address.
Yep.
Street name. So I live on West Summit Street in Livingston, Montana. I am the middle school art teacher here in town and I just kind of have a proposition to make with one of my students here. We've been discussing this and just really excited to kind of plant this seed and see what happens with it. So art's always been a really important part of my life and it's helped me to express myself in ways that were very necessary. And I've seen that growing up and with other people, not just with myself, the importance of it. And so I'm here to propose a public art mural here in town. And to kind of see if we could get something like that started here to help beautify this town and to even help some of the youth here. There are amazing benefits to, you know, involving more people in the community. It helps to, I guess, build a safer sense of community and to give people pride in their work. And I want to involve as many people as possible in this, especially with the youth here in town. Because there is a huge value to that. And I think these students seeing their work in public even and working with one another, collaborating, it's a big part of life and that there's skills that will help them develop and grow. And I think that it would just be a lovely thing to see some works of art here in town that. Yeah, I don't know. I just, it would just be great to share that with people and with the city too. So I would like to be a part of a project like that.
That's what I got.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Emmett Shanley. I live on West Montana Street. I'm a sixth grader at S U M S Middle School. I am here to speak about a mural I would like to create under the underpass at South B Street. I walked through that underpass. I actually did it today and I see the walls and man, it's so bland. And so I was thinking about that. And then in art class, we did a graffiti project where we had to write our names in a graffiti style. And that got me thinking about that spot again. And every once in a while I see graffiti there, but then it gets raised, you know? And I think if you made a plan mural to both beautify the space as well as prevent graffiti on this. Um, also we can create a mural that could celebrate living since past, if that's something you want to do. My mom recommended a piece since she's Lance and she was super excited about it. So she talked to the parking trails. I think talked to you guys who then had me come and speak here about what I wanted to do with it. So murals and art can really bring the community together. They invite people to slow down, enjoy the peace and their surroundings. And then this is the part I'll forget. So we'll read it out. They encourage more people to walk, which can bring economy to our town, more foot traffic in local businesses. And is aligned with the active transportation plan and growth policy. I've, I also hear there's talk of creating a mural map. And if this mural is done, I would like to add it to the list. Um, murals also encourage people to keep spaces clean and take care of them, which in turn makes them safer. They also can encourage conversation. But this is why I'd love to start a mural project. Thanks.
Thanks, Emma. We normally don't do back and forth with folks to get public comment, but I'm the chair and I get to make exceptions. And so, and so we will make an exception for this time. I want to share with you that I also walk under that underpass and I walked on it on the way here. And I also think similar thoughts as you. And also, good job listening to your mom. You should keep doing that. Commissioners, we did, Grant and I did have Mr. Gager and I did have the unfortunate meeting with Kelsey and she talked to us a little bit about Emmett's ideas. And Mr. Gager gave her some feedback on how she might proceed. So I was hoping we could get some feedback from the commission and maybe hear from Mr. Gager before we move further into public comment. Does that work for the four of you?
Yeah.
Do any of you want to give feedback on what you've heard?
I have. I think I do, but you know. Emmett, you're an incredible public speaker. Good job. That was incredible.
It's a lot from like nine school presentation.
Yeah. Well, you did your research too. So that was amazing.
My mom didn't listen.
Oh.
Listening to your mom.
Good job. Listen to your mom. Um, but no, I love the idea. I know Chris King probably with Esther Livingston have been doing some working on murals in the downtown area. So it might be a great way to get everyone connected. And I know that she is really passionate about public art as well. So that might be a good connection for everyone as well. But I think it's an incredible idea. So I mean, I hope that we can find a way to move some of this forward.
Cool. Yeah, Commissioner Schwartz.
Um, Emmett, is there currently artwork at the underpass now? There used to be. Is it? There was a mural there at one point, wasn't there?
There was.
Yeah.
It got painted over.
It's got been painted over because it got trashed.
Emmett's right. It's a blank slate waiting.
Yeah, cool.
It's like big in town.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Yeah, you're right. There was a mural there.
Okay. That'd be an awesome place to start too, you know? I don't really know if city has control of that area or not, or.
We can ask Mr. Gager.
Man, when time comes.
Great presentation. You got me convinced. So whatever I can do to help make it happen.
Commissioner Freeman, do you want to add to the?
No, it's good.
He did good.
Yeah, for what it's worth, Emmett's mother, Allison Shannon Lear, recently served on Parks and Trails.
Oh, nice. Awesome.
But she's not on there anymore.
Fantastic. Mr. Gager, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Uh, yes, as the chair pointed out, we had to meet with Kelsey on this request. And as luck would have it, the underpasses is just about the only bridge in the city of Livingston that we have any control over. And so, you know, there are, there are a few ways. It sounds like the commission is interested in potentially seeing something on the underpass. So you know, I would offer that staff and I can put together a quick request for proposals. And because there may as well be other communities who have had similar ideas and you know, whether it is all one mural, several murals, who knows? But you know, staff and I could put together a quick request for proposals. And then Emmett could put down kind of some words on paper and maybe some descriptions of what you might consider drawing there and other proposers could as well. And then we go through a process to work through creating a mural and then as Emmett pointed out, those murals in locations like that can be repeated from time to time. So certainly we would want to work in that and I presume to preserve the quality of painting if we do go that route. We'd be happy to put together a request for proposals and that's the commission as well.
I see. Affirmations all around. Mr. Gager, thanks, Emmett.
Thank you, Emmett.
Emmett supporters.
Yeah.
And now we'll resume our regular order for folks that don't have early bedtime.
Yeah.
So anybody else that wants to give public comment? And please just remember if you could sign in on the sheet, that would be super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Fun idea. Keep government fun.
Good evening. My name is Rusty Tresbus and I live at 989 Swinley Road, Livingston, Montana. City commissioners, city manager, gager, fellow members of the public, I stand before you today to express the need for better care of the Park County Senior Center building. As we all know, the building is a vital part of the community and it plays a crucial role in the lives of the seniors in our county. The mission of the Park County Senior Center is to promote the wellbeing of our aging population. It is imperative that we do everything in our power to make sure that this mission is fulfilled. As many of you know, the senior center building has seen better days. It is in dire need of repairs and upgrades and without proper attention, it will only continue to deteriorate. This is unacceptable and it is time that we take action to ensure that the building remains a safe and welcoming place for our seniors. I urge the city commissioners, city manager, gager to communicate with the park county commissioners. Take a closer look at how we can better care for the senior center. This building is not just a physical structure, but it is a symbol of our commitment to our seniors and to the wellbeing of our community. The seniors who depend on the center deserve nothing less than our best efforts to ensure that they have a safe, comfortable, and welcoming place to spend their days. One way we can do this is by investing in necessary repairs and upgrades. Now, this may include fixing the fire suppression system so that our seniors can remain safe. Updating the heating and cooling systems or repairing and replacing or updating just general things of need. These improvements will not only make the building safer, but they will also make it more inviting for seniors, encouraging them to take advantage of the programs and services offered there. Another way that we can care for the senior centers by supporting and having good communications with the board and the people that work there. These dedicated individuals are the backbone of the center and they deserve our support and our recognition. And providing them with the resources that they need to do their jobs more effectively will not only improve the services they offer, but it will also ensure that they are able to continue to serve our seniors for years to come. In conclusion, I urge the city commission and city manager, gager, in collaboration with the Park County Commission, to take a closer look at how we can truly make the building a place that promotes the wellbeing of our aging population. This building is a vital part of our community and it is our duty to ensure that it continues to serve our seniors for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty, for coming and bringing it to our attention. Um, I just want to ask a quick question. Mr. Gager, do you have any jurisdiction or role to play with the building? Do you know? I'm not super familiar.
I am not aware and I have, that is one of few groups in town that I have not had any contact with. It is on my notes.
They're slipping away. No one's, no one's paying attention to them right now. The senior center has donation jars at the gas station.
So, Mr. Gager, what do you, do you need anything from the commission before we move on? If you need.
No, no, I'll give them a call tomorrow and.
Because I do know another commissioner has brought this up recently too.
Yeah, there's a, I was on the board for two or three years way back when we had that place home.
Yeah.
I also, I think I told the city manager, there's tenants running out of their building and they're not being taken care of with their problems in the building here. So that's another another issue. Bob Siegel has his business there.
Right.
On the side street. He also has a problem which I can tell the police department that there's too limited parking downtown. And when you have a store, there's very few places on those side streets for people. But the people parked there for the whole half a day or a day and that just takes away an awful lot. So this is, but that, at the time, I was involved with the building and we were very conscious. Did an awful lot. We put the solar, we did a lot of things at that point. And then all of a sudden it started to slip away. So there is a need to look this thing over and come up with a solution. It is a vital vital thing, especially those people of that age. They have very few places
Right.
to hang their hat. So it's important.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Well, you're good. And you can bring it back to us if there's some more we can play or give us an update.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty.
Anyone else that wants to give general public comment tonight? Come on up, Lyndy. Join us.
I have so much on my mind. Is this the meeting where you guys are going to discuss the dog ordinance?
That is not on the agenda.
I must have had the wrong date.
Um.
On Facebook.
Uh, there was something in the newspaper, I think, on it, but it's not on an agenda right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you can still give general public comment on anything that's not on the agenda that the city has jurisdiction over. So you're good to talk about it.
Well, I was just prepared to just observe, but isn't there a meeting at the library in a little bit on the downtown business district thing? Or do I have the wrong day on that? Mr. Gager, do you know?
You know, I am unaware of that.
It's the downtown business thing and it's starting at 6:45 and I wrestled with which meeting to come to. I don't know about that.
Who's getting that on?
Do you? Do you want to just let us know? I don't know your name. I'm sorry, but.
My name is Martha of the Polymers Department.
Okay.
It was canceled today because of the weather.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It will be linked in.
Okay, good. I can unlapse that rewind. Okay.
Did you want to give any comments though while you're here?
Well, no, I was just going to observe, but now I do because that back door is locked. And I called the dispatch and she unlocked it for me. And now we have to come through which door to come to these meetings.
Typically the front door here on.
Okay.
What is the?
Okay. And the reason for that is, I don't know. I don't know. It's only been, I've come through that back door for 40 years, but everything's changing.
Not everything. Not everything.
Oh, that would be nice. I know. I just get kind of stressed out and I can't get in and.
Okay, Lyndy, I think you have my commissioner number. You can always call it if you're not getting in in the meetings.
Oh, I went to the dispatcher and I don't have a cell phone. I'm a dinosaur.
Um, is there anyone else that wants to give general public comments tonight? No. Well.
Yes.
We done? I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that.
You know, that's at work. No, I was going to say something about the senior center, but that's between you guys. Because is there a downtown historic fund? Because the senior center used to be the Yellowstone Hotel. And I think at the, at the county and state level, there's funds available for that.
So I think Mr.
It shouldn't be, it shouldn't really be, unless I'm wrong, it shouldn't be at the city level.
Well, I think Mr. Gager is going to look into it and see. No, it's okay. It's a good question.
Okay.
There's lots of.
Have anything.
There's lots of interesting things that are not obviously one thing or another in Livingston. So they'll dig into it and find out for the.
Okay, but thank you for seeing that that's unlocked all the time. Oh, and there, oh, there is plenty of housing or parking right across the street from the senior center. Carter Babe has that public parking lot for the senior center. Are you aware of that?
Well, I'm not complaining about the parking at all.
I appreciate you all. I just. Maybe we can.
The lack thereof of things working. Last two weeks ago, there was a 24 hour on call because their fire suppression system wasn't working.
Oh, yeah.
There are some things that need to be addressed there. And I'm just trying to feel who I need to go to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, you're good. Mr. Gager is going to look into it and he'll get back to us. So far he hasn't let us down and everything he said he's going to look into. Actually.
I trust it.
He's got a good, whatever the, whatever the sports tournament is for that. He's got a good batting average. Um, okay, so we're moving into consent. Oh, Patricia's ready. Thank you. David and see Patricia online. Hi, Patricia. Please start with your name and address and you can share a public comment with us.
Yes, Patricia Grabo, 204 East Callister Street, Livingston. I just want to mention to the city commission. Um, the, the Parks and Trails was given the opportunity to take a look at the Bozeman Trail as it comes to Livingston. And they decided it's not a priority. When we could, when I was on the city commission, I initiated and followed through on the grant for the Livingston Bozeman Trail connection. I want to say that this is a unique time right now for the city to really take a look at what we almost got when we did the Bozeman Trail connection. Now, the Bozeman Trail came through Livingston in two places. It basically came down Front, Front Street. And there are 40 journals of people as they followed the Bozeman Trail to Virginia City. And a lot of them talk about coming through Livingston. The other place at which you could actually see the tracks for the Bozeman Trail is on the backside of the mountains. I don't know how to say it. In, in Meg's Road kind of area. So there's two of them. But we always proposed doing it in segments. Now, M R L is at a place where they have some money that could follow through on what we wanted when we initiated the Bozeman Trail coming through Livingston. And that is, at the time, they said they would be willing to basically give a sidewalk area trail space on the south side of Front Street. So that you connect the Bozeman Trail connection to the south side of Front Street, which is a bicycle trail. And they were interested, they were willing to take that, that land and turn it into a trail. Now, we've had a young man killed coming along what could have been a trail and he would not have been killed on Front Street. Now, we have that possible opportunity right now of going back to M R L and asking for that to, for that trail again. And having a, a Bozeman Trail coming through Livingston on Front Street. And that would be a bicycled path that would go from Star Subdivision all the way past the shops to the public, to the public works kind of area. It is something that I think is worth considering. If the, if M R L would be willing to be able for us to have that trail, this is the one time we would have the opportunity to take advantage of that. So I, I think it's worth consideration. Um, what you would do is you would have the trail and then you would have excerpts from the people that came through the Bozeman Trail because Livingston is the only town that would actually tell the story about the Bozeman Trail. And it's significant in, in the, in the history of Livingston and the Bozeman Trail. So it's, it's, I'm just saying publicly that it's worth considering looking into having that trail along Front Street and asking M R L for the grant to, to allow us to do this. And I can, I can send more material on it if you're at all interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. I think I, I think I got an email from you recently with this information. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, is there anybody else that wants to give general public comment? Right, general public comment is closed and now we'll move to consent items. There's four consent items on the agenda tonight. Are there any that commissioners want pulled for discussion? I would like consent items C pulled. So I have some questions. Do we have a motion then for A, B, and D?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A, B, and D.
A second.
And then if you just vote on this first and then discuss C and then we can go on to. Okay, so, uh, yeah, more call please.
Can you?
For Commissioner Kell or Commissioner Freeman?
For.
Commissioner Schwartz?
For.
Commissioner Mike?
Of course.
Motion passes. And then my question on C. Mr. Gager is, oh, you know what? I forgot I'm in the minutes. Well. That'll be a fun process question for you. We've already voted on it and I noticed errors in the minutes. I'm going to proceed with that. I just.
Yeah, unless the city attorney has another recommended option, we can go back and revisit it night and then.
No.
So should I just address the minutes real quick and then?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So on page seven of the minutes, it says Connor of the Tree Board gave public comment. He's actually the chair of the Parks and Trails Commission, or I'm sorry, Parks and Trails Committee. So I just want to fix that. It's the top line of page seven. Yep. Yep. And then right under that, everyone else has an organization name, but not Leslie Feigle. So I just want to acknowledge that Leslie Feigle is with the Chamber of Commerce. That's all that I wanted to do with the minutes. So it's the best process now. Do we need to vote on it again?
Yeah, I would. Yes. So do you? Something to those corrections.
Do we need a new motion?
Yes.
So can someone make a new motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended language on the minutes. For the seventh.
So we have.
February meeting.
Motion by Schwartz to accept amended minutes and a second by Lyons. And we just vote on that? And that's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
Commissioner Kell.
For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyon.
For.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now consent items C. Um. So I have a question about this parking lot lease. I'm Mr. Gager, I'm curious why we're renting a parking lot and renting spots in a parking lot?
Thank you, Chair News. In preparation for this item, I with the historic literature of the city shows that the city and Livingston daycare came to an agreement in 2014 for the city to lease the parking lot that the prior to that, the parking lot was unused and it was vacant space. And there, the city had received a number of requests for, you know, additional parking resources in the downtown areas is what we've uncovered. And so the, the owner of Livingston daycare you know, had some conversations with the city and agreed to provide that parking asset to the city. And at that point, the city, you know, had received some requests from local business owners and others in the downtown area. And so the city entered into agreements with some local businesses and individuals to sublease that lot, if you will, or sublease portions of that lot, spaces of the lot to individuals and businesses in the downtown area. That's the arrangement that has existed for the better part of the last nine years is that the city leases this specific lot. We have another off-street lot on D Street. And, but this is the one on Second Street and this one has 40 spaces in it. And so the city leases those 40 spaces from the owner, Livingston daycare. And then again, subleases those spaces out to just private individuals and businesses.
Is this, is this the same practice for the one on B Street that we're, we lease it and then we have a list of people?
Uh, yes, essentially the same business.
So I guess I'm curious about process. Like, is this like a lottery or like, I, like, I've never seen these, I've never seen like advertising of these spots open to the public. And so I'm just curious since most things that we do are open to the public. For instance, Emmett came up tonight and we have to open it to everyone. So I'm wondering, is that what we do here too, or?
So there was, there was an initial process to award the spots. And since that time, there has been a waiting list. And as, as people give up their spots, which does not happen very frequently, people from the waiting list are called to fill one of those spots. And so so it is, it is not the, the most public or publicly available parking asset.
How do, how do people even find out how to get on the list? Is there like, do they have to like go to the lot and see a sign or?
Yes, and then, and then come to city hall and then inquire about it. And, and we do, we do have people from the list that come in on a monthly basis to kind of find out where they are on the list and all of that.
I feel like this is new information to me and I've been on the commission for a minute. And so that's interesting. I didn't know this was our process. Do other commissioners have questions about about this? Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, I assumed that we owned that property.
Oh.
I knew we were leasing it out, but I just assumed we own it. I know we're leasing and then subleasing it. So, which is fine. Don't have some of them. That's the only thing I, I just wasn't aware that um, we didn't know that. So, okay.
Good, Vice Chair Kale. Are we covering our costs with the lease rents with the sublet?
Uh, yes, so uh until the current action to increase the lease. Excluding staff time involved, the city appears to be making about twenty-five dollars profit on the operation of the lot each year. Again, that doesn't include staff time to process the payments and all of that. And so we really. You know, are really just renting it out basically at our cost to to rent it and so.
Actually. On that as well. I mean, I've driven past that lot several times and I think I probably illegally parked in that lot a few times. Do people, it surprises me that every one of those spots is rented out and being used. If that makes any sense, um, that lot seems to be very empty a lot of the time. See, I I guess I'm just thinking about the number of shoppers and folks we want downtown and we have an empty lot sitting there, so.
I have a. No, but something you asked. Maybe it really is we're actually, if we're not making money on it. We're breaking even with staff time. Is that correct? We're actually subsidizing certain people to have parking spots downtown, like taxpayers are subsidizing. A handful of people who have been hanging on the spots potentially for nine years. That concerns me. I wonder, like, my perspective, it would be great to see if there's a way that this process could be updated. I don't. My understanding, you know, of the the will of the public in Livingston is they typically don't like to subsidize. For each other and generally folks like people to pay their own way in the community. So um. That's just what comes to my commissioner shirts. Your hand is up.
Um, yeah, I I. Be nice to um. I don't see needing to make a profit on it, but at least for virtue even, but um. The purpose of that is to keep the business owners from parking in front of their own businesses and stuff like that. And that's in it. It makes it a lot more convenient for business owners to be able to park their vehicle there within a relative. Close proximity to the business and stuff like that instead of taking up um to our spaces, which. You know, it's been a struggle um monitoring and maintaining code enforcement. When we do enforce, people get mad, you know, and but yeah, it's it's one of those vicious cycles that we always have and always will have, so. I mean, I'm I'm not looking to make money on it, but yeah, I definitely make it um. Cost neutral, you know, revenue neutral, whatever, um, it takes to do that. But I I find it essential. It's kind of like a parking garage, but um. Looking at it from that, you know, standpoint. So I want to encourage business owners to partner and. For about the time that we. The bank did take over that lot when they were using that. Um, while they were building, so. But they had to pay for that bank debt, so.
I remember that coming before us. Did that come before us? I don't remember that.
That was agreement between. City and the bank, apparently.
Must not have been through the commission.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't remember.
Would have had. Mission oversight. Uh, yeah, I don't know.
I don't either.
Water under the bridge.
Yep, do you have any folks have anything else to Commissioner Lyons or Commissioner Friedman? I would love to see like an update based on some of the things that we've said, if there's other options. Especially since there's two lots and if what Vice Chair Kale is saying is the spots are empty and what. Commissioner Schwartz is saying is that we need, we need those spots being used so that businesses can be. You know, having shoppers at them. It seems like if they're empty, that's. I don't know, it's there's more of a complete picture with what folks on the commission are saying, so.
But yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But at at this point, I think all we're looking to do is. To renew this lease. Now that has nothing to do with us.
We can ask him for a.
Right, right, but I mean, I'd hate to see this lot.
Yeah.
Lose us this lease over, you know, two hundred bucks or three hundred dollars worth of taxes.
So can you give us an idea of, yeah, practices considering that concern?
Yeah, no, I I I think Commissioner Schwartz, um, actually, uh, by way of his comment, has has introduced a an interesting thought. Of mine, which is that the lease agreement, which is included in the packets, um, attachment. Does provide that the the city has the tenant has the ability to manage the lot as we see fit. And so this this current sublease arrangement that the city is involved in. Exists only because that is how the city wishes to operate the lot and so um I would be happy. Uh, if the commission sees that, I'd be happy to examine how the city uses the lot and all of the the leases that we have, the subleases. Are all on a month-to-month basis, as is the master lease that we have. And and so uh the city staff can look and come up with alternate ways to manage the lot, including potentially. Uh, allowing public use of the lot by um by shoppers and and of course, that could happen. Uh, either in a a paid or not paid way. Um, so if uh if the goal was to. Um, provide convenient parking for um visitors and shoppers of the downtown, we could do it in that regard. And if the goal is to ensure cost recovery, you know, we could achieve both goals um at the same time, what's possible, so.
So it sounds like what you're suggesting is that we can vote on. Um, consent item C because that's just the lease for the lot and then you can bring back something else for a conversation in the future about. The lots that we're leasing and how we might use them to meet the needs of what the commissioners are saying.
Yeah, and actually, the the conversation is rather timely. Um, Chief Johnson's not here now, but he and I have had some conversations on parking. And parking enforcement, parking resource management in the downtown area, so we can uh include these lots and those conversations, I would say. And we'll record the report back to the commission this spring.
I think we just touched on one of Mister Gager's favorite topics, if we remember his interview, go enforcement. So awesome. So I'm looking for a motion on action item C. I'll make a motion to approve action item C.
Second.
Motion make kill in a second by Freeman will call please.
Or.
Motion passes. Thank you, commission. We don't have any proclamations on the agenda tonight, no public hearings. Next up is ordinance number three zero four zero, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, and then after thirty. Article five, section thirty point fifty of the city zoning ordinance entitled signs, Mister Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. The item before you is the um first time that you have seen this. And I will introduce Jennifer Seaberson, our planning director, to go into more detail about the sign ordinance. But this is one that has um its origins in the Historic Preservation Commission. And and their goal of maintaining the integrity of the downtown, so Jennifer, turn over your.
Good evening, Miss Sharon, Jennifer Seaberson, um, planning director. Uh, Faith, can you hit the presentation button? And this is just a couple of slides to provide a little more uh background. Um, then what was in the staff report that I drafted for this meeting? Um, I believe Faith provided you with the original staff report that went to the zoning commission back in January of twenty twenty-two. Um, and I apologize, I forgot to forward that to her while I'm down. Um, so these slides sort of go over that information a little more clearly. And I can just do it this way. And basically, the background on this is that like uh. City Manager Gager said it was initiated by the Historic Preservation Commission. To allow and actually encourage um historic sign types in the downtown historic district. Uh, my understanding, and again, a lot of this happened before I came on here. Um, is that of the Historic Preservation Commission was reviewing um design review applications for signs. And consistently seeing that a lot of them were consistent and and in character with. Um, a lot of the historic signs here, but they weren't allowed by our sign ordinance. So new signs were not able to mimic. The existing historic signs. Um, so um the uh. Historic Preservation Commission um drafted the ordinance updates. Uh, forwarded it to the zoning commission, the Livingston zoning commission, that's the L C you see there. Um, they approved the text amendment, the proposed text amendment five to zero in October of twenty twenty-two. My understanding is it went to them originally in January and there were some discussion back and forth. Um, I think some other things happened with summer and and so and then when uh previous. Playing director's lap, it's sort of got set to the side. So um now we're bringing it back to you. Um, we're bringing it to you for the first time for the first reading. Um, the update is. Sort of the purpose of the update, there's a few reasons behind it. Um, like I said, it allows for any encourages historically compatible signage in the downtown historic district. Um, things that Livingston downtown is sort of known for, the projecting signs, the wall signs, as you can see a couple of examples up here. It also um will streamline sign review process outside the historic district, so any signs. Um, to be installed in the historic district will still need to go through design review by the Historic Preservation Commission. And then outside of the historic district, uh, the sign reviews can happen administratively from the staff. Um, also, the enforcement for uh enforcing the sign code will shift currently is with the um building official. Um, and to be more consistent with how the rest of the zoning code is enforced. Um, it's we're proposing to switch that to enforcement by the zoning coordinator. Uh, which just means the zoning coordinator would, the zoning coordinator being me at this point, um, would review um. Sign plans, sign details. Um, again, if it's in the historic district, that goes forward to H P C. Uh, otherwise, uh, I would look at that before then it would be allowed to go to the building official for a permit. Um, and then lastly, it um aligns the our sign code with um a Supreme Court decision. On um restrictions about content-based signage. Um, and that was a landmark decision and uh our code now will be compliant with that. Um, that decision. Um, this ordinance uh update will uh support growth policy. Um, it. It's consistent with other parts of the zoning code. Um, or the intent of other parts of the zoning code, chapter thirty, and then also, like I said, um, brings it into um. Compliance with state, county, the federal laws, again with the the Reed versus Town of Gilbert decision. Um, also, um, with regards to the Night Sky Protection Act, uh, the proposed ordinance. Update um. Provides some clarification and changes, I think, to the lighting of the signs, so all signs will be in compliance with that ordinance. Um, and then just to hit on the findings of fact really quickly. Um, for any zoning uh regulation update, um, it needs to be made in concurrence or accordance with the growth policy. So I just discussed discussed a couple of those. There's a few more. Um, goal three point three, conserve environmentally significant areas as well as areas, site structures or objects with historical, architectural or cultural significance. We can agree that downtown Livingston has quite a few of those. Um, and so allowing those um. Those types of historic signs for the downtown areas of just uh promote that uh preservation of of place. Um, another one, chapter eleven. Um, sort of has a a couple of things it deals with with the sign ordinance, recommends reviewing and updating the sign ordinance. Um, to again meet the intent of other, the rest of the zoning code, chapter thirty. Um, it says to update the uh sign code um for commercial areas. Um, again, minds with the laws, uh, there's another one up there. Can you skip to the top of this page? Sorry. Um, and then strategy two, what do you buy? The zoning amendment update sign codes for all areas in the city, but the focus really of a lot of this is for the downtown historic area. For those historical websites. Um, and then uh governing body needs to consider reasonable provision of light and air. Um, the impacts anticipated by this uh ordinance update. Effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation system needs to be considered. Um, lighted signs must not create a safety hazard uh to vehicular transportation. Uh, minimum sign height, I it's been updated in this uh to further prevent hazards to pedestrians. Like along sidewalks or walkways, um sidewalk sign requirements. And updated to promote navigate promote navigation by those uh mobility challenges. Uh, another consideration is um compatible urban growth. The um, the signage update, the ordinance update allows signage that is uh consistent with historic sign types. And design in the downtown historic district, so it meets that requirement. Um, district character and suitability for particular uses. Again, the sign types that preserve the character of the downtown historic district is the focus of this ordinance update. And then um. The body needs to, the governing body needs to consider conserving building values and encouraging appropriate use of land. Um, no light use changes are proposed and no impact to building value is anticipated through this. Will do my best to answer questions. Like I said, I think a lot of this, a lot of the initial discussions were done a few months ago.
No, I think Jennifer covered it. Jennifer, I'll stand for any questions, Commissioner.
Do you folks have any questions?
Comment, um. Having served on the historic preservation board um many years ago. Um, signage was probably our number one thing that we were wanting to be consistent with and encourage, you know, historically, especially. Neon and stuff like that. Um, I've read through this whole thing, it it's. Brings a lot more clarity, clarity and sense to um the ordinance. And makes it. Me. More forceful. And has that with any document needs to be updated once in a while and nice, nice work. My like is, thank you.
I, this is entirely Matthew Menard's. Spent a lot of time going through the ordinance language and and discussion with. Historic Preservation Commission and the zoning mission, that's my understanding, so who does what?
Thanks, Commissioner Schwartz.
Are we are we commenting?
We're asking clarifying questions. Yep, because we have to make a motion before we get a chitter chatter.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for a good presentation.
Do you have any question? I have a process question. Um, when, so when there's signage in the historic district of downtown, does it only go through the committee? Or does it also go through staff?
Uh, it's brought to staff. They submit an application form. Um, and it has to comply overall with the the sign ordinance in in section thirty fifty. But it automatically goes to the H P C for the um. Sort of the the design aesthetics of it. Um, so it's kind of two-fold. There's there's parts of the side ordinance about what types of signs you can have, height, that kind of thing. The H P C is really looking more for does it aesthetically blend in or is it consistent with the surrounds for that building, that kind of thing? So it just, it gets reviewed by Bill.
So it'll, yeah, that's great. That's what I was wondering and hoping since. Oh, yeah, you probably were dialed into all of the nitty-gritty details in a way that totally dialed in. Um, looking at this Matthew Menard on, sometimes he shows up on our meetings. When we summon him, when he finds like this, no, he's not here. No other clarifying questions still? All right, so how about a motion on ordinance number three zero four zero?
I move to approve approve ordinance three zero three four to update.
Oh.
The city of Livingston, article five, section thirty point five zero. Signs and authorize the chair to sign ordinance three zero three four.
Before there's a second, I want to get clarity because I think that the ordinance of three zero four zero and the agenda of the staff report, can you just let us know what? Before there's a second, I want to get clarity because I think that the ordinance of three zero four zero and the agenda of the staff report, can you just let us know what?
The ordinance should be created here five zero, your signs.
Three zero four zero.
It looks like it was transposed in the sign code.
I know, they're so close.
We'll just give Mr. Gager one second.
Yeah, it's three zero four zero.
Do you want to um change your motion real quick? Sorry, before there's, or Commissioner Lyons, before there's a second.
I amend the motion.
I don't think you have to amend it, right, since we didn't?
Uh I'm referring to ordinance three zero four zero, not three zero three four.
Okay, thank you. I will second the motion approving ordinance three zero four zero.
Is that clean enough? So a motion by Lyons and second by Kale. Thanks, everybody, for your patience and good catch, team. Um now we'll open its public comment. So if anybody has comments on ordinance three zero four zero about signs, this zone update, come on up.
Because I'm here to address my name. Only because I'm here, if you guys are going to be looking at signs, I remember it was a while ago, about five, six months ago, this was brought up and um the other city manager showed a picture of the interstate looking down into Paradise Valley. And he showed a picture of all the different signs that we have. So like looking at Park Street by Matt's Meat Market, looking underneath the interstate, take a look at your signage. If we want to make this place look inviting for the tourists going into the park, you could not just the uh downtown district, think about that area as well.
Thank you, Rusty. That's an incredible memory you have. Remember that.
Right, I could, I can see the picture in my head right now. It's like, oh wow, there's a lot of signs.
You can pay that.
Um, any other public comment? I see Patricia Graybo, Patricia Graybo, you're up. You can come off mute and start with your name and address, please, Patricia.
I also um served on the historic preservation board and um was on the city commission when we when we passed the Night Sky ordinance. I want to say that the Night Sky ordinance never did allow for the kinds of signs that are on Bank of the Rockies, for example, that are moving, kind of neon, kind of signs. So I just uh I think that has to be taken into consideration when we look at this implementation of this ordinance, by the way. I don't know if you know that Livingston has over four hundred buildings on the National Historic Register. We have more buildings on the National Historic Reg- Register than New York, Philadelphia and Boston combined. So it is appropriate that we keep the historic nature of signs both in the historic district and outside of the historic district. Uh that night sky, those um kinds of neon, moving neon signs were never allowed in the original night sky. They just crept in. The school district also has a uh moving neon sign. So uh it it's a matter of these things happening. It's but with, if we're not vigilant, they happen essentially. So I welcome this ordinance. I think it's as with everything, frankly, with Matthew Menard, it was pretty wonderful and appreciate uh the commission taking a look at at this ordinance. But I, while we take a look at these ordinance, we really have to look at those moving kind of neon signs because they're not appropriate. They've never been considered appropriate for Livingston. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment on ordinance three zero four zero is closed, commissioners. Any follow-up questions or things? I saw Commissioner Lyons first and then we'll work on later.
I I'm really pleased to see this come before us. I think that it's I think the impetus is really clear that, you know, there were, there's a proposal of signage that can form to the character, but the the way that the process existed, it didn't allow for that to be approved. And I think that inappropriate administrative burdens can sometimes change policy outcomes, and I think that's a good example of that. So I'm glad to see this coming in line with with the need. I appreciate the comments from the public as well. Uh I'll never forget the first time I ever went in the Bitter Valley. I was just one of the thing, it's it's an incredible, incredibly beautiful natural place, but it is just aesthetically destroyed by what are they called? Fillores, thank you. Um and I think that uh I think that signs are an extension of the the character, it's an extension of the architecture. It's a, it's a way that the commercial world creeps into the built environment and it's important that we I mean, we have beautiful signs in Livingston and they they really do improve the built environment in Livingston. Uh those that are, you know, in line with that, with the character of our community, but there are examples of of signs that are not in line with the character of our community. Um and we want to be mindful and careful about um how we we permit those. And I think that um particularly at the entrances of our community, both coming in and going out, as Rusty was mentioning about going down to the park, I think those things leave a lasting impression. What what I think about the Bitter Valley, I think about the Bitter Mountains and I think about I I think about those signs. And so we, if people are thinking about signs in Livingston, I want them to think about the ones that are are representative of the aesthetic part, you know, so I appreciate this effort. I think it's really important.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Yeah, um that that was a great observation, Rusty. Um I know exposed and looked at that. But same thing on North Southern Avenue, years and years ago, picture of that and just how hideous, you know, it was. It's taken, you know, they're not there yet, but it's taken a long time. But regardless, Patricia Graybo talking about the Bank of the Rockies sign, you know, um former city manager and I asked each other, how did they just put that up? You know, because it doesn't conform to Night Sky ordinance. So I I've always been concerned about our process of how these signs go around in. I I know it was never we had the same problem with historic preservation, preservation district with signage, because some people are leasing the buildings, it's not the building owner, so they don't know what the rules are. And um I think that we've come a long way on that, so I'm not going to rehash that, but it looks like this gives us more teeth to enforce, you know, you know, um enforce these ordinances and uh and how do we discourage that, you know, um and the same thing with uh going out the other end of town like um like Community Closet, there's one of those neon signs again, you know, we're noxious, I I think. And uh but uh yeah, if we can uh enforce the zoning, um I'm I'm all for this. It doesn't happen overnight, but um it's a step forward. Thank you.
Before we move to next commissioner, can we address some of what Commissioner Schwartz brought up? Mr. Gager, I'm not sure if there was a process for those signs. It sounds like from what I've heard, it's that there ought to be. Can you speak to some of its concerns?
Yeah, I, you know, I guess I would just speak generally in the area of enforcement. Jennifer and I have been working quite a bit on enforcement matters. And enforcement occurs throughout the zoning uh code, really, throughout all sections of the code, but it comes up pretty frequently in the zoning code. And so uh we have recently stepped up enforcement efforts specifically with regards to signs as well and reached out to a number of um property and business owners that have not conformed in signs. And moving forward, uh Jennifer, Chief Johnson, myself and some others have had some conversations on our uh just general code enforcement mechanisms, whether it's parking, animals, uh zoning, night sky, different sections of our code. And so uh we are working on some improvements to uh the code enforcement process. And uh excited to share those with you folks, probably more around budget time, um because that's kind of when that would come in. But uh but yes, there there have been some applications. And and we've had cases where signs were approved and any different signs was built. And so it's, yes, it's it's clear that we have kind of some historical enforcement issues that we're addressing and evaluating.
Is that something you can just keep us posted on? Because I, this has been coming up at least as long as I've been on the commission, so over four years, we've been
Well, yeah, I mean, it's it's like, you know, do you have to get a permit to, you know, do a sign, you know?
Sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. There there is a sign permit, building permit. And so um I will, I will promise you, as we work through the budget process, we will revisit code enforcement.
It takes time and money. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you also, Commissioner Schwartz. I know this is something you brought up. I remember you bringing this up on historic preservation. Um Commissioner Freeman.
I concur with everything that's been said. And I think we're moving forward, so I don't know much I can answer that. That's good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a big issue and uh it looks like we're moving. That's what, that's the important thing.
I have a a little bit of a question sort of based on this conversation that we just had about enforcement and some of these signs that were built. I'm sure that there's a grandfather date for some of these, but maybe not for others. And if they're past that grandfather date, can you still enforce? Even though they've been doing the wrong thing for potentially a number of years?
Yeah, so you know, grandfathering refers to pre-existing non-conforming. And and actually, uh some of the specific examples that have been discussed seem like they were never been formed, even from the day that they were installed. And so um in that case, there is no uh pre-existing non-conformance, there's just non-conformance. And so um in those situations, we absolutely do have the ability to enforce upon those as well. And I'll note that the 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 ordinance before you folks does deal specifically with animated signs. And uh and you'll note that there is a an added clarification that only the time and the temperature may be animated. And so, yes, we we have the enforcement team um now to to work on signs that have animated more than time and temperature. Jennifer and I charted a path to to do so and embarked upon that path with some non-conforming signs and we'll get to that path with us.
Great, wonderful, thank you. And yeah, I I agree with all my fellow commissioners and I'm excited to see the ability for folks in our downtown areas, region, you know, area to have signs that look like the old times. And town, it looks like one of the coolest parts of our downtown, right, is our neon and you know, driving into town at night is is incredible when you come in downtown. Actually, when you drive into downtown and I I worked out in the valley for a very long time and came home late at night a lot from that job and to get downtown and to hit that and to see how beautiful downtown was, it was pretty incredible. So to think that we might get some more signs like that downtown um is exciting. So thank you.
I have nothing substantial to add. You all covered it. Thank you. Um so this is the first reading. It's been a while since we've done the ordinance. There's another reading in like thirty days, is that right?
Yes, it will be at the uh March twenty first.
And then is it in effect? If it passes, is it in effect immediately or does it?
Thirty days.
Thank you.
And um if I may interject, I've heard some comments both from the public and from commission members um regarding signs in the the city's southern gateway. And so um please know that as uh Jennifer and I um move forward with uh with your team, we will uh as we start to address the gateway overlay zones, we will take your comments to heart because they are also reflective of what's in the growth policy to ensure that signage is addressed in the gateways as well.
Thanks. Have fun. Two code enforcement topics for you tonight. You must be thrilled.
I didn't expect it to go here, but I'm pretty happy it did.
Right, so we have a motion by Lyons and a second by Kale. Anything else, Commissioner? Are we ready to vote? All right, roll call, please. Motion passes. Next on the agenda, resolutions. First up, I'm just wondering, actually, singular, resolution number five zero eight seven. Resolution by the City of Livingston, City Commission, authorizing the submission of a grant application to feeless staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, authorizing the city manager or designate to enter into required contracts for grant funds to hire additional staffing for Livingston Fire Rescue. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Noots. The item before you um is to authorize staff to submit a FEMA safer grant. And the 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 goal of the safer grant is uh if if awarded, we will um supplement the the current staff members of the Livingston Fire Rescue and uh will provide us greater capacity. Really uh important, or most important in summer months, um when the the park is in in full swing. And um this is uh one step of of many that uh Chief Chablowski and I are taking to review uh staffing levels within Livingston Fire Rescue to ensure that we have adequate response levels. And um you know, while this is a uh a limited duration grant, if it is awarded, it would certainly offer um additional capacity in the department and uh provide us an additional time to determine the long-range funding models to support the the staffing that appears to be in Livingston Fire Rescue. So I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Commissioners. Do you have any questions?
I think we already answered your last one.
All right, so do we have a motion on, this is, your resolution number is on page seventy four. Resolution five zero eight seven.
I'll move to approve resolution five zero eight seven and authorize the chair and city manager to sign the resolution, authorizing the city manager or their designate to apply for FEMA safer funds and execute any contracts or requirements if awarded.
Motion by Kale and a second by Friedman. A public comment. Or anyone that wants to give a comment on this resolution? Seeing none. Public comment is closed. Commissioners, any comments?
I would uh, I was glad to see this out here because I had talked with the city manager about this. Quite a very important area. And I'm glad to see that we're on it real quick, so there are some problems there before. So this is excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking for funding for us to be able to do this. Um so this is, this is great. Thank you.
All right, that's all been said. Roll call, please. Moving into the action. Right, we have discussed approved deny a request to create an exception to the enforcement of the open container statute during the flat pocket wedding. Mr. Gager.
Good evening, Chair Noots. The item before you is a request for a exception to the alcohol consumption restrictions, um and specifically the restriction concerning consumption of beer or liquor in the public right of way or alleys. And we, uh the city received a uh special event um permit application for a wedding in September. And the uh the the party to be married um would like to to do it publicly and have a the the street party. And so in order to give uh give the celebrants time to plan and arrange, they have uh sought approval of the uh exception at this meeting. And so I will stand for any questions you may have.
Do you all have any questions?
Aren't commissioners invited?
I believe you even have a plus one.
That satisfy your curiosity. Other commissioners?
I think it sounds like fun.
I know this couple is going to be a great time.
Are you disclosing that? Uh we have to take public comment. So but first we need a motion. I have a motion on action I made. Who wants to make this fun motion?
I move to approve the request to create an exception to the enforcement of the open container statute during the flat bucket wedding.
Uh, motion by Lyons and a second by Kale. A public comment, please. Seeing none. Public comment is closed for action item A. Commissioner comments. I have a conflict on that day and somebody send me pictures if this passes. And I'm not kidding. I really do want to see pictures.
I would ask for a reschedule, but it seems like they have a lot of stuff.
But I can't. Any other comments?
I would I would just say as a. As a former and still sometimes event planner, I approve of their getting this done early and their planning schedule. So.
Yeah, good for them. Anything else, Commissioners? I will say, there's one thing I will say. My fifteen year olds. Said that this is the best wedding idea she's ever heard of. So if you could pass that along. They have the stamp of approval of a fifteen year old saying this is like. Most interesting, awesome sounding wedding. So I think it sounds great. I'm excited that they asked. And I'm kind of surprised that people aren't asking us this. More regularly, right? Seems like a fun place to get married.
Maybe it'll be a trend now.
Maybe a bunch of us are going to start renewing our vows on Main Street. One of us still needs to get married, but. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Motion passes. Congratulations to the. All right, next on the agenda. Action item B, the twenty thirty ADA transition plans update, Mister Gager.
Uh, thank you, Chair Noots. I will invite Martha O'Rourke, City Engineer for the Public Works Department. To walk the commission through plans for EDA improvements in the city of Livingston in twenty twenty three. Martha.
Project Manager, Engineer for the Livingston Public Works Department.
Did I read it in correct? Oh, okay. That's a thing I do sometimes. Sorry.
This was our ADA transition plan update for the year twenty twenty three. So as you can see up here. The first slide here, this is our most current ADA compliance map showing. ADA compliance streets and sidewalks as of twenty twenty. So it's a little out of date. Um, but this map lives in our city county or JS platform for staff use as our starting point for connectivity and briefing projects throughout the city. It's super an update with all the construction that's been. Going on in our town. So we're working with city counties G I S F to update this map. Well, this next map here is the priority list from our twenty nineteen G D new transition plan, which is on our city website. Priority projects here, there are only nine. The first one was the O Street Connector Trail, which we completed in twenty twenty. Yep. Item B, there is the wheelchair accessibility swing. That was completed in twenty twenty one at the Mike Webb Park on H Street. Uh, we actually have a handicap accessible vault toilets at almost every single city park with the exception of Green Acres Park. Priority project number four, there is handicap parking on Park Street. Since one's a little tricky, it poses some difficulty with regards to safety. It's a very tight corridor. Heavy traffic load. So although not directly on Park Street, we do have ADA fourteen at the depot as well as within the downtown area. And so something we could still look into, but it is. It's a tough project. Um, project number five here is increasing sidewalk width at the rail crossing at Fifth Street. So we've been working with MDT, the railroad, and it's it's going to be a big project. Because it's not just about increasing the width of the railroad. There's a lot that needs to go on with. Permitting and everything else that we want to do as much as we can with that crossing. At the same time. So we've been in contact with them and it's going to be a bigger coordination effort. So we'll keep you updated on that. Priority project six on here is. The handicap parking and wheelchair access for skate park. So the city public works currently working with our engineering firm to design this. And once designed, we are going to request budgeting allocations for construction in twenty twenty four. Um, priority item seven. Is connector to the Big Hill. So there is a little bit of a path there in the Summit Street right of way. Um, but we are working with the HRDC. To obtain a legal trail easement in the gully to the west side of the high ground subdivision, that deep gully that's up there. A lot of people use that as a trail right now, but it's not technically legal. So we're working on the finishing touches on that. Um, priority project eight is connector to the small hill. So we had sidewalk connection completed by contractors of the last constructed phase of Northside. So that one's all said and done. And then finally, item number nine there is a handicap crossing at Katie Benel Park. Which is M Street Park on the north side. We have a location for this set, but it's just so hard to find a contractor to do such a tiny little project. So we're going to keep trying again this year. Next slide. Is our priority list from the Trails and Active Transportation Plan, which was adopted last April. And it's also on our website. Um, the priority list here is a result of input collected during the plan's public process during the twenty twenty one. Input basis. Um, that included surveys, public meetings, and also input from local. Committees, the Parks Central. Um, the cost estimates here are based on twenty one, twenty twenty one costs, so they are probably low and they don't include any design. Costs associated. So we'll have to reevaluate each of we get to that. Um, we'll talk about these projects on the next slide, but I wanted to point out one. And it's that Yellowstone River Trail. So priority project B there. Um, although not kind of described on this list. There is a pedestrian bridge crossing at Mayor's Landing in the preliminary design stages with Park County right now. And it's, so this whole trail, as you can see there, it's a big loop. And it does cross the city county jurisdiction line. So it will be a big coordination effort. Um, the Public Works Department itself, we hope to coordinate with county to utilize this new bridge for second water main crossing to the east side. Um, and that would provide a looped water main and redundant water supply to the hospital and any future development over there as well. So this is what we have completed in twenty twenty two. The Trails and Active Transportation Plan. Um, the Trivium planning from Idaho completed that for us and was adopted by the city in April of last year. They worked with a number of our city advisory boards. And got a lot of community input for that. So also the Starbucks redevelopment project, they added sidewalk adjacent to their property. So that helped with some connectivity along Love's Lane back to that Eagle Landing subdivision behind Albertson's. And. We updated a lot of ADA ramps during our sixth and seventh street water replacement project last summer. So now some upcoming work for this year. So I just mentioned that Love's Lane sidewalk connectivity. And it. It butts up to that railroad property there. So we have a small section to connect from that sidewalk. To the depot trail that runs along eighty nine across there. And it turns out we may not actually have an easement. For Love's Lane at all. So we're working on that. Um, we already have it surveyed and we need to work with not only the railroad, but also MDT. To get that. And then once that's all done, we can draw up some plans and do a. Tiny little connection piece there. And then there's also one more vacant lot to the west of the Starbucks property that will meet sidewalk as well. And we have that surveyed, but we do not own that property. So we either wait for development or kind of do it ourselves. So that's all right with this project. So this next one is our Montana Street Reconstruction Project. This is a big one. Um, it's in our fighter plan and we are working with the county and MDT on nominating Montana Street urban route. It's an urban route. Um, for reconstruction, complete reconstruction to include curb gutter. Um, new asphalt, streetlights, ADA ramps at every intersection and even storm drain inlets on the surface. We can do surface work with this. MDT program. Our goal is to start this in twenty twenty eight. But before we can do all the surface work, we need to upgrade the sewer and water mains underneath. So that's a public works project that we're hoping to do. In the next four years. A big one. So I talked about ADA, we have reconstruction. Um, every other year, Public Works Department requests approximately forty thousand dollars in funds allocated for ADA reconstruction project. Um, so our current priorities for these ones are Bennett Street sidewalk project. That's priority project A of our active transportation plan. And then also priority project item C, which is the Lewis Street Active Transportation Corridor. So the four intersections here are Lewis and Third, Yellowstone, F and G. Those are the next ones moving outside from the downtown area. Um, those have been on our list for the last two years. But it's just becoming increasingly challenging to find a contractor to take on such tiny little projects. So we've started working with our big project contractors to see if they can tag a couple of these on while they have concrete present out. Um, like I mentioned, the sixth and seventh street, we were able to add an extra ADA around there. Just because they were here and they were willing to do work with us. So the ADA crossing at Katie Benel Park, um, action project number nine from the ADA Transition Plan. Um, location been set, couldn't find a contractor. So this year with our regional sewer project in that part of town, they're going to see if they can tag this on. And to give them a try. And quite ask them. Yeah. So hopefully this is the first time I hear about. This next one is our twenty twenty three Transportation Alternatives Grant Application. Um, we applied for this last year and we're not successful, but it is for an accessible route between Livingston Depot and B Street on the north side of the park. So we're going to try again this year. Application is due in May. Um, but this year we also hope to tag on. Some rapid flashing beacon to purchase and install. At these five locations here. And if you scroll down just a hair, we can see what they look like down there on the bottom left there. So marks in and out B Street and Park, Town and Country. I know they have a. Flashing thing, but it's not quite this robust. Second and Park and then guys are in Park. So if we can get this grant. We can at least do one or two of these. And that would help make our ADA crossings a little bit safer. So moving forward. Parks Street Crossing at Bennett Street. It's not necessarily a listed project on any of these priority lists, but it is. A project that we've heard a lot about. So we've started discussions with MDT and the railroad and it's going to take a bit of coordination to figure out next steps and where we can go from here. Um, in the meantime, we're going to tackle as many of these Trails and Active Transportation Plan as well as ADA Transition Plan projects. And hopefully can find some contractors to help us with any necessary construction. So that's our presentation for the update and I will try to answer any questions.
No, I think it's covered it quite well. Thank you, Martha. It's great. We'll stand for any questions to the commission man.
Uh, Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, thank you so much. It's exciting to to see these next steps. I think. Accessibility for for folks with mobility challenges is really important. I'm glad to see that this is moving forward. I think it's a really critical. Element of active transportation. You mentioned accessibility at the skate park. That's a particular area of interest to me. Um, I'm curious what what that's going to look like. And then I might tap on another question that's not quite related to ADA, but.
So as you know. There is plans for a state recreation center down there near the skate park or place with recreation center. So we're making sure that whatever we have planned for the skate park will eventually work with the feature plans of the recreation center. Um, but for now it'll be curb all the way around. With a sidewalk for part of it and some sort of access of viewing platform for ADA. We don't quite have the plans yet. It's been surveyed by our engineers, but. No plans yet, but we can share those when we get them.
Great. And so there's been some landscaping happening around the skate park lately. Are you aware of that? And can you tell me what's going on? And then I might share a noted feedback on that.
I don't. I know there's landscaping, but that's our perks department.
Then I will not share it on. Thank you.
I can pass it along.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd encourage you to. So, um, right now there's this like fine gravel. Um, it's kind of like a zero escape situation. Um, and it gets blown into the park. Um, and with the smooth concrete on the park. And the small wheels of the skateboard or roller blades or whatever. It it's very hazardous.
Oh, I've been the victim of that.
Yeah. Um, and so it 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 can't be the final landscaping solution there because it it just it gets tracked into the park. It's blown into the park. Um, and it's legitimately like really dangerous.
I can definitely pass that along.
Any other questions, Commissioners? I'm going to work my way through. I'm going to start on the first page. I'm curious about this logo. I'm wondering, it's like somebody funding this. That's not us. You know who this logo this is?
I believe that's one that was created by Explorer, incident if I'm not mistaken.
Are they funding this?
Not that I'm aware of. No, no.
I just would like to make a note that. Free advertising. Perhaps if it's difficult to use the city logo, maybe we should find a city logo that's easier to use. I think it's something that, um. The commission has talked about. More than once is the city logo. And I can bring that up in the comments, but I just wanted to. Note that as somebody who's elected by the people of Livingston that. My city logo ones and things, unless somebody else is funding it, in which case it makes sense to me to be your department. And moving on to other content in this, I'm really excited, first of all, Martha, that you're here, that we are new. Because you're, and we hear, and we don't get to see very often. I was really excited to hear about the connector to the Big Hill. That was something that came up a long time ago in a conversation with HRDC. So thank you.
They actually own that entire property.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember it was a, I believe I was sitting over there at the time where Tori is, where Commissioner Lyons is, and I asked if. They would be open to working with the city for an easement. So I'm glad to see that you all picked that up and are working.
This is also Matthew Minard. Continuation.
His ears must be burning tonight. Um, well, thank you for picking it up because it's not lost on me that he's not here and you are. So thank you for doing it. Um, I'm also really excited about Katie Bonnell Park. I'm excited about. Um, this big Montana Street project. I'm excited to see every other page you're talking about more side projects. As a commissioner that lives, the only commissioner on the north side, I'm aware that. The people on the north side also want equitable attention. And so I'm really happy also to see all of these. Crossings on Park Street being dealt with and the Park Street projects in general, because that's the dividing line between us. And it is not always safe or easy for pedestrians to cross. So thank you for prioritizing it and putting these things into the pocket. It's a really nice balance and probably the best I've ever seen since I've been on the commission. So thank you. Any other comments? Or questions?
Doesn't take much to excite you.
That is fair. That's fair. It doesn't.
I I have one sort of comment question on the the slide for Trails and Active Transportation Plan, this one. Um, and it's got the priority of. Projects here and it says top tier projects in order of priority rankings. I believe I remember just this kind of the put in our our thoughts that. The the consultant, when he did, when they did the presentation of this. Plan said, you know, these are the priorities, but don't. Right, like skip one to get to the other. If you have what you need to get to, you know, like if you can't get A and B done, go ahead and do C. So I'm just hoping if that makes sense, um, just so that we're not. Waiting to get two hundred thousand dollars to get something done, but we've got ten thousand dollars to do something, you know, then we should do that. So. Um, I just wanted to sort of put that out there as a reminder. I don't know, Commissioner Lyons, if you remember that enough, but just. As a thought that we don't have to do A before we do B if we can get to B first.
Any other things before motion? Right, how about a motion on? Uh, this transition plan, I don't see, uh, is there a staff report in here with this? I don't see it. So do you need a, do we need to vote on this? This transition plan, I don't see. Is there a staff report in here with this? I don't see it. So do you need a, do we need to vote on this or? Great. And I don't need it. Forget that. We don't need a motion. Do you need anything else from us on the plan? Any other comments?
No.
You're good. Okay. Thank you, Martha. No, we don't need to take public comment on it. Do we? This is a discussion. Okay. Um, let's see. So next on the agenda. Is. Action item C. So I will go ahead and move to enter into post session to discuss both personnel matters and litigation pursuant to Title II, Chapter Three, Section two zero three. Of the Montana Code annotated. Do I have a second? All second. So we have a motion by news and a second by Kale. Roll call please.
For vice chair Kale. For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Klein.
For.
Motion passes and we're gonna take our break before a momentum close session before we start. So it takes minutes to get the room set up. Should we give ourselves like? Ten minutes. We'll see if that works.
Yeah, plenty. Thank you, ma'am.
That ten minutes.
I'm pretty good.
That was.
Six. Yeah. You were about. Jumping there.
Figured you'd read the law.
I did. Remarkably.
I can love these. I just noticed there's no term in here. It should have. All right. But there's no term.
Say good job. And this. But we've got a few.
Yeah, I'm good. I was sick last week and then my wife was sick.
Oh, we can. Yeah.
Come in.
Let's let the reporter in and then we're stuck down. Thank you. Is there anybody else out there, Sean?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. Where do I go? Are you ready?
We are.
Awesome. So now. Where's my agenda right here now? So now we're to the comments portion of our agenda. So Mr. Gager.
Thank you all for attending and I would like to welcome to the community Sean Baterra from the Livingston Enterprise. He's here and I, Sean, I will say I've really enjoyed reading more local content in the newspaper over the last week since you arrived. So thank you for that. And and to the the community at large, I would say. It's going to be a cold one again later this week, possibly some snow. So thank you everyone for keeping your sidewalks clear and. Please take a moment to check on your your elderly and and single neighbors over the course of the week as the temperatures did because it should be cold one. And please know if you need any help, don't hesitate to call the city or zero six eight two three six thousand. That's it.
Commissioner Lyons.
I don't think I have anything to add this evening. I've I've extended my my vocabulary tonight, so.
Better get that in the news. Did you get that? Take that one down? No, I'm just joking. Commissioner Schwartz.
I'm gonna piggyback off Grant, say, welcome, Sean. I enjoyed reading your articles, actually talked to John Carroll Saturday. In between him roughing basketball games. And. Yeah, I look forward to seeing good things happen with the enterprise. I think after talking to John, you know, it takes a while to work things out. Be patient, you know. But. I'm pleased. Yeah, you know, we discussed, you know, same thing, more local issues. I can get the AP on my phone, you know. You know, some stuff, obviously, but. But no, other than that, I have nothing to say. I'm golden. I gotta go shovel snow.
And shovel, you shovel on the north side when we're on my house.
On my little John or tractor.
Doesn't the wind just blow it away on the north side?
Good point. I'll never tell. That's our secret. Commissioner Freeman.
Yeah, this is a tough one. And. I think it was in a very difficult position, you know, being here before, during and after.
Yeah.
And was not getting the right information.
Right.
Which doesn't help you make decisions correctly. So it's basically where it's at. And. It was a terrible period. I was gonna quit the commission at one point. I just didn't like the mechanics of what was going on. And. I had this year to finish and I had I had one more. But I wasn't getting the right information. Which biased me, but anything else going on, I'm trying to figure out, you know, this thing doesn't add up. And it was misled an awful lot. I want to apologize for that because it's hard to make decisions if I don't have the right information. But Lisa. Faith, you know, the ones that were here were impacted and the question was trying to get the right information. And. The right information wasn't out there when you were asking questions. So I bias you in the future. I'm glad we're at right now. We got a great team. Okay, and I I want to keep this. And apologize for anything passed because they had it wrong. Tried to get the right stuff, but it's never got the right information. So a lot of it was the rid of that guy. And. That's where it was. And every time I stepped into it, you know, you had Lisa, you had Courtney, you had Faith. You're rebounding with people who've been here before. But you weren't up to date on what the hell was going on. Really going on. And it was hard to make any decisions or how you looked at things. I'm certainly glad sitting here right now to be part of this group. What happened before, we want to apologize if I made wrong information, but that's what I was said was wrong information. So. Terrible period. So I hope we can resolve it and get on with business and do the stuff we're supposed to do. I yield.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherko. I am proud to be a member of this commission. I'm proud to sit right here next to this man every every meeting. So yes. Stay warm out there. I get very cold. And I understand the shoveling of the box. I live on a corner lot. It's difficult.
It's very difficult.
Time I forgot to talk about it this week. You should call Quentin to help you.
Horrible.
It's horrible.
I know. I've I've got several. I do.
Yeah, yeah. So so yes.
Scoop.
Clean those blocks. I I clean mine. We tried very hard to get it cleaned. But stay warm and I'm really excited about things moving forward in our city. I know that Mr. Gager got started with. Some growth policy implementations in the last couple of weeks with the planning and zoning boards and I look forward to seeing how that moves forward. I know.
Thank you. I want to start. I want to start with you. And say thank you for your apology. It has been really hard for me to be. Treated a certain way or talked about a certain way. I forgive you. And I am glad that you're here. And before I finish my comments, I would love to give you a hug if I can.
Thank you.
No, thank you. I really appreciate you acknowledging that because it's. It's been a tough time for me too. So thank you. And now for the rest of my comments, I want to say I'm so excited that we had. A young member of our community come tonight. Emmett, thank you all for allowing me to break with tradition so that we could all support him and his vision for. Public art, which is amazing. So thank you for letting me break our own rules so that we could give him accolades. I also wanted to bring up the logo. I am, I would love it. We've talked about it before when we were, our capacity was much different. That maybe it's time for an updated logo that's easier for staff to use and easier for commissioners to use on. It's easier to replicate, easier to, you know, put in emails or on these like presentations tonight. I. If staff is using logos that aren't ours, it's clear to me that maybe it's time we.
Yeah, it's cute, but it's time for.
Right.
Rebrand.
Yeah, and if Grant has capacity, Mr. Gager has capacities that. I don't, I'm not sure what you need from us, but it's something we brought up in the past with previous administrators.
Well, with it.
And it's time. There was a conversation and some votes and money put towards signage at parks and trails. And so I think. That information should be somewhere. Jane Marie will certainly have lots of information on that if you haven't gotten already. And if there's a way to like fold that into the conversation, it seems like that's kind of where we were at in the past.
Right, because we needed something, you know, consistent.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have a park district which is separate from the city, okay, that'll be, that would be a different thing now, but. Still, you want to be compatible from one.
And I want to acknowledge also, moving on, I want to acknowledge that something was brought up tonight by staff about a wellness center location that's been determined. I believe that that is not quite accurate, that those decisions actually come through the commission and we haven't had them. So. I understand that there's like Commissioner Freeman was alluding to, there's been some misinformation. Moving around. It sounds to me like maybe the wellness center is one of the topics where there's been some. Assumptions made about where the commission's at or what votes the commission's made and we're not there yet. Sounds like Mr. Gager's gonna have that on upcoming upcoming agenda for us so we can have a public conversation about. A future potential recreation center. So that would be welcomed. I think that would be welcomed by me. I think other commissioners have expressed interest over the past year. Also, so just wanted to flag that for you all. And then lastly, I wanted to share with you, Mr. Gager, I've already been getting positive feedback by this letter. In case you haven't done it yet, people are really liking it. I really liked your uh. Your section on roots and pipes, actually, because that's something the commission hears a lot about is true roots and pipes. So it was nice. I don't know if that was your idea or someone else's, but it was great to see it. Right before we would be expecting to get comments from the public. So fantastic, I think.
Well, thank you. That I will be honest, that one came from Helen out in Public Works, so I'll pass that one to her.
Yeah.
And.
She probably gets the calls too.
Yes, she does.
It's great.
And so if 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 there's ever any questions on content or if you folks have any content that you would like to get out to the community, please don't hesitate.
Yeah, I think it's really great. It seems like folks are really enjoying the updated concise messaging. Seems well received. So thank you for doing that. That's all in my list. Motion to adjourn. Would you like to make it? You want to say so moved?
We'll say it.
Say so moved.
Yeah, so moved.
All right, so motion by Freeman, second by.
Yeah, second.
By Schwartz, on favor, say aye. This city commission meeting is adjourned at eight twenty P M. Another one before the eight thirty party job, Mr. Gagers.
Thank you.